Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the June 3 city council meeting. Please rise to salute the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, not God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call of the members, Councilor Agenzio.
Here.
Here, Councilor Janino.
Here.
Here, Councilor Garino Sawaya.
Here.
Here, Councilor Haas.
Here.
Here, Councilor Herramio.
Here.
Here, Councilor Kelly.
Here.
Here, Councilor McKenna.
Here.
Here, Councilor Novoselinski.
Here.
Here, Councilor Silvestri.
Here.
Here, Councilor Zambudo.
Here.
Here, and Council President Cogliandro.
Here.
Here, Coram, is President. Approval of the Journal of the Regular Meeting of May 20?
So moved.
Calendar item number three, the city council will present certificates of achievement to the recipients of the 2024 Riviera Community Scholarship Serena Ross, Carla Leo Robles, and Zarius Bellamoria.
Good evening, honorable counsel. I do have one of our representatives and recipients in front of you this evening. I did want to mention, and as you, some of you may know, or some of you new councils may have seen, we have the Riviera Community Scholarship that's given out each year. We give it to three deserving students. The community scholarship is funded through a payment. When you get your tax bill in the mail, or sometimes your water bill, you'll see there's an option to add a dollar, add $10, add any nominal amount that you'd like to donate to the City of Riviera Scholarship Fund. And at times, there's been some generous donors that have been really helpful in keeping this scholarship fruitful. Every year, this scholarship recipient or recipients goes through a rigorous selection process through the school department and the mayor's office. It's not just an academic scholarship, it is also based on community service. Each year, we see that these recipients attend some of the greatest universities in the country and sometimes the entire universe. So you see kids going everywhere. We have an exceptional student in front of us tonight. And note that this scholarship is presented in the Riviera High School Scholarship Night, which we just had a few nights ago, and the recipients received, each of them received a $2,500 scholarship to the university or college that they're attending next year. The two recipients that were not able to make it on tonight, there is a bit of a graduation, a lot of graduation, pre-graduation events happening, and they were not able to attend. One is, first is Carla Lee Robles, who will be receiving her $2,500 scholarship. And again, she was in attendance on last Thursday evening at the school to receive her award. The second recipient that received their $2,500 scholarship is Serena Ross. Again, very bright future ahead of us. And third, and, you know, not that I'd like to rank these, but getting to know Zarius and also being fortunate to, I worked with his father for a number of years in my prior life and lives in Ward 3 on Proctor Ave. Wonderful Ward 3 recipient here. Comes from a great lineage of unbelievable students and also is passing on some of this to his younger brother, I believe, that's a sister, I apologize, sister that's at Riviera High School and is going to be doing some great things. Has received a number of other scholarships, but also is going to be attending an unbelievable university that none of us could get into. And he might want to tell you a little bit about that. But in closing, before I do present Zarius in front of you, the scholarship has been run for a number of years by many different former colleagues and people that have represented our city proudly. And I do want to pass the reins, and it has been duly passed on to the mayor's office aide. So Ms. Rose Burns will be championing and cheerleading and leading this charge over the next year for the Riviera Community Scholarship through the mayor's office and hopefully for years to come. So I wanted to congratulate Rose for taking on this honor that's now bestowed upon you. But without further ado, I do present to you Mr. Bellamoria.
Hello. I want to say thank you for the scholarship as it will help me pay for college. And I think the scholarship is really helpful for students who helped the community. And yeah, thank you. And next year, I'll be going to Olin College of Engineering, studying computer and electrical engineering.
He's going to come up and take a photo if that's great, if you all, good. Right in front.
Hey, can we congratulate Rose on graduating from Boston University?
Rose was, congratulations, Rose. Rose was another, you know, she didn't receive the Riviera Community Scholarship, but she did get a number of awards from the City of Riviera. And again, Zarius is attending Olin, and it is truly, and we all know this, is an exceptional university that, I mean, less than 1% of the people that apply are awarded entrance into that school. So he is a special and unique individual, and he's going to do great things in the City of Riviera. Thank you so much.
Please sign file.
Calendar item number four, Keith Amelin from National Grid will appear before the city council to discuss double polls, specifically third-party attachments, which are currently holding up 21 double polls in the process.
Madam clerk, have we received any communication from National Grid as to a reason that they're not in attendance?
No, last I heard, Council President Keith said.
I'm sorry, I don't mean to speak out of turn here, guys, but this is completely unacceptable. Does anyone else wish to speak on the matter? Counselor Kelly.
Are there any consequences that we could perform or put into place?
You know, I continue to bring up something that happened, I believe it was 2017 or 2018, with the previous Ward 3 counselor put his foot down when Fiori's Market was not receiving the treatment from National Grid that they were supposed to. And they went without power and coolers for years, I think a decade. And I have insisted that we put our foot down in the same exact fashion. You know, just when I, and I'm just going to speak freely here, I just felt really good with our relationship with National Grid, that we were communicating well with them. And then here we are again in the same spot. And if there is a real valid reason that they're not in attendance tonight, I'd like to know. I hope everything is okay, but otherwise, this is completely unacceptable. Counselor Zambudo.
I agree with you, Mr. President, and I'm suspicious, and I believe there must be something that caused this because we did, we were getting back to communicating here. So I want to believe there's an emergency that caused this, and we didn't hear about it yet because it was on the way here or something. So let's hope, let's hope this is the case, and we'll take it from there. If we need to take action, we can always take action.
I hope you're right, Counselor. Thank you. Well, please, this unfiled.
Unfinished business, calendar item number five, in ordinance further amending the senior citizen property tax work-off abatement.
Counselor Kelly.
Yes, so we have some further amendments to this. Would you like me to read the amendments? Or basically what's happening is, we can't offer, we cannot offer anything higher than the minimum wage. We mistakenly thought the minimum wage was $15.75 an hour. It is actually $15 an hour. So abiding by that $15 an hour does then change the hours that seniors would be working, volunteering their services from 62 to 66.6. And that would allow us to increase the $750 per year tax, property tax abatement to $1,000. And then the last change is just in section 2.88.050, the financing would be increased from $25,000 to $50,000. And that is a, we're doubling that only because it was not increased in the past. It was just an oversight. So that would correct all the issues in the ordinance. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Garino Sawaya.
I agree with Counselor Kelly, but I disagree with the amount. I did a little bit of research, and Boston does $40,000 for an individual and 55 for family. So I think maybe we can follow suit to 40,000 instead of 50. No, no, what they make, 40,000. Do you know what section of the ordinance that is? I do not, I didn't write it down. Michelle wanted to change it from 25 to 50.
Madam clerk, please.
Please. The funding for the program comes from the assessors overlay account. So right now, that line item is only funded at 25,000. In order to be able to fund the program at $1,000, it needs to be funded at 50,000. Okay. I misunderstood, thank you. So I think that's just, I'm sorry, Mr. President, that's just, was kind of like a housekeeping item that we were cleaning up. It should have been increased, but it was never done. So now, putting it at the 50,000 just clearly reflects the amount of money for 50 individuals, getting 1,000 apiece, it's $50,000. So it has nothing to do with the income requirements, which is what I think you were speaking to. Has nothing to do with that.
Council President, the income requirements are as follows. In no event shall a person be eligible for this program if such person's income exceeds $73,250 for individual applicants, or exceeds $89,500 for married applicants. Income limits will increase by the percentage increase in the U.S. Department of Labor, Bureau of Labor Statistics, and Consumer Price Index for the previous year as determined by the Commissioner of Revenue.
Any other counselors? Counselor Novoselinski.
Thank you, Mr. President. I don't have a problem taking care of the senior work-off program, but I think the mayor has to look at, if this, this has to go through the mayor's office as a, as an ordinance, is that true? No, it does. So it's something that the mayor has to look at to see whether or not we can afford it. Because somebody's going to have to pay for it somewhere. And it's going to have to come out of somebody's pocket somewhere. Somewhere in the line, whether it's somewhere in the city budget, or whatever, you know, wherever he could find it, if he could find it. So it's going to be his choice to see whether or not it can work.
Counselor Zambudo.
If we can't afford this, we're in bigger trouble than I think. So, I mean, if we can't take care of our seniors, I think we should be ashamed of ourselves.
Counselor Kelly.
This is a nominal amount. We should, I agree with Counselor Zambudo. If we can't do this, something's wrong. This is a nominal amount. It is a program that's only available to 50 seniors, I believe, and we're increasing the amount from $750 to $1,000. So it's basically another $250 for 50 people. I'm pretty sure we can do that.
Any other counselors? Sir, name and address for the record.
Anthony Pozziale, 51 Arcadia Street. Working to pay off a debt without a salary, that is the definition of indentured servitude. I don't like the fact that our seniors, whether it's 63 hours, or 62 hours, or 66 that it might have to be, have to work in their retirement to get some kind of a discount. You're talking about 50 seniors to get a discount. I think the city has $50,000. Today, you'll probably vote to give 100 and something thousand dollars to Sandcastles, $500 million for a high school, $50,000 for pizza potties, that'll be in the budget coming up. I'd like to see this program go away, and I'd like to see the seniors get the discount so that they can enjoy their retirement. Now, there are people that would say, seniors like to work. Sure, they do. But I don't know anybody that likes to go to work, make $1,000, don't get any of that money, and have it go right to a tax. I would like the seniors to be able to get this discount without having to work. But if you must have somebody work, could you add to the program that volunteers could do the work? For example, I get two vacation weeks a year. I'd take one of my vacation weeks, and I'll happily work the 66 hours for a senior. They can get the $1,000 knocked off their tax so that they don't have to work. Thank you.
Counselor Kelly.
So I believe, and the madam clerk can confirm this for me, that we as a municipality are following along with Massachusetts general law that is allowing us to do this. So that if we were doing anything other than what's prescribed under that Massachusetts statute, we would have to take it up as special legislation and ask our state representatives, Jeff Turco and Jessica Janino, to help us get this done. I would happily work with them to try to get something done. I understand that that would take longer. I don't think that that would be something for fiscal 2024 that we could get in place by if we can't, even if it can get done. So what I would ask is that we at least entertain this now so that the seniors can get an extra $250 for 2024 fiscal year, and then work on something else with Representatives Janino and Turco to see if we can do anything in addition to this.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Zambudo.
Thank you, Mr. President. In a perfect world, I agree with Mr. Pozziale. However, we've had people begging for this work-off program, and I think, is there still a lottery for this? And, you know, so there are hundreds of people trying to get this work-off program. Some of it for work, some of it to get the, what was it, 800, to get the 1,000 bucks off. So in a perfect world, I agree with you, and if you want to donate your time, that's wonderful, and I think it's noble. But I think we need to go forward with this as is, and if we could put more people on the program, because we have a list of people that don't get picked in the lottery, that don't get anything. So the more we can put on this, the better, and the more money they can get for doing it, I think it's, I think you'll ask, out of the 50 people that do it, there's hundreds more that want it, and they're thrilled to get it. So I don't think it's, I don't see this as being evil to the seniors. That's my point. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Haas.
Thank you, Mr. President. So my former position at the senior center, I saw the work-off abatement programs firsthand. To answer Counselor Zambudo's question, they do still have the lottery. 50 people receive real estate, and 50 people receive water. I'm curious if Counselor Kelly or anyone looked into upping the number. Has that ever been proposed to go over the 50 recipients?
So madam clerk can confirm, but I believe we are going along in accordance with the statutory requirements of Massachusetts general law in terms of the components.
The city council has the ability to open this up to however many people in the lottery. It's a matter of funding the program to provide for whatever number the city council chooses that is going to be in the lottery.
Counselor Janino. Oh, sorry, go ahead, Counselor Haas.
So with this, we are more or less just looking to alter the, to go online with the state, the minimum wage and, and 50, was it 50,000? But nothing with the number of recipients that hasn't been discussed at all. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Janino.
Thank you. I'm looking at this switch in front of me right now, and I think the $3 an hour difference is minimal. I've had the chance to work with some of the seniors in the past, and they're nothing but eager to work at the station with me and help us out. And I'm all for this here. Thank you.
Mr. President, sorry, can I just add one more thing? I would also like to say, we had a number of workers at the senior center that did great work. They enjoyed coming to work and coming to volunteer every day, and did it with a smile on their face, whether it was pushing the barrel around or answering phones. We had a great group at the senior center. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Silvestri.
Thank you, Mr. President. I think we, this is a great piece here, but I think we need to take a deeper dive into this. We very, I don't think in the last six or to eight years have we even hit the 100 mark of residents that would qualify. So maybe we need to look at upping the number of income or something like that. But right now, currently, the 100 spots don't get taken in for the past, I don't think, eight years, 100 people have made that.
Counselor Haas.
Thank you, Mr. President. In response to Counselor Silvestri, he is correct. The 51st spots for the real estate usually go very quickly, and then the next 50 go to the water work-off. But I think it has been a struggle to routinely get close to 100 or around that number. Thank you.
And also, we have the Veterans Work Off Program. That, in that program, as Mr. Pozziale mentioned, a family member can do the work off. So if you have a disabled veteran in the home, a wife or family member, child, son, nephew can come do the work hours, and the veteran will still receive that bonus. So if you, and there's no age limit, all you need to do is be a veteran of the military.
Counselor Garino Sawaya.
What if we further amended it and changed it from 50 recipients to 75 and left it at the 750?
I think the max we can go to is 70.
The ordinance currently has the program listed as a minimum of 50 lottery applicants to a maximum of 70 lottery applicants.
20 more is better than 20 less.
I think the point that was being made was that we're not even getting 100 people, is that correct? So what would raising the cap do? Maybe on the real estate side, I could understand, but... Well, what is the will of the council?
Mr. President, sorry.
Counselor Jeremiah.
Can we further amend this to allow for volunteer work off for folks who qualify but...
At this point, I would recommend that we put this into subcommittee, since we have now two amendments on the floor. I don't know how you feel about that, Counselor Kelly. My recommendation, since we're getting amendments now, is that we put it back in a subcommittee.
Put it back in subcommittee.
So it was unfinished business. Which subcommittee would you like to put it in?
I find this odd, because, you know, all I'm trying to do here is increase some money for the seniors, at least for the fiscal year 2024. If we keep amending it, and I could be wrong, clerk can correct me if I'm wrong, but if we don't move on this now, I don't think anything will get done for the next cycle, right? Is that correct? So I'd rather give them something and then, you know, do the amendments further, and then we can have the amendments take place later down the line.
Okay, so we have, we have two amendments on the floor. Maybe we should vote on the first one, which is to raise it from 50 to 70. We'll just take it up now? Is that what we're doing? So we can do up to 70?
The number, section 2, this is already in the ordinances, section 288030, application process. The number of senior citizens participating in the program shall be limited each year to a minimum of 50 and a maximum of 70.
Counselor McKenna.
I just have an idea, and I don't know if it's going to work, but, I mean, if the real estate, Counselor Haas, if the real estate, the 50, that's being filled really right away and the water is not, then why can't we, like you said, Counselor Garino Sawaya, that we could, you know, limit it to maybe 70, and then raise the fee for them, raise the minimum wage to, you can't do that? Okay.
Okay, so I'm going to just pause right now. We have a lot of different ideas on the floor, and I'd like to know if anybody is, excuse me, gentlemen, I would like to know if anyone's putting an official amendment on the floor at this time? And if you are, if you are putting an amendment on the floor, please state it now.
I think instead of going up on...
Counselor Haas.
Thank you, Mr. President. We have to focus on the income level also. So if, can this be altered in a way that we can, because I'm nervous that if we go with the increase in spots, we're still going to see the same amounts of people apply for it, and it's going to be, you know, we're going to be short, because not everyone qualifies given the income level. So I think the real crux of this is the people that qualify for it with the income, with what they take in a year.
Counselor Silvestri.
Yes, considering we have the CFO in the room, could we hear from him?
I would love to hear from the CFO.
Thank you.
Good evening, sir. Name and address for the record, please.
Good evening, Richard Viskey, 281 Broadway, CFO. I'm sorry, I walked in during the middle of the conversation. I think I understand some of the questions, and I'm happy to try to answer them, but just remember, this senior tax work-off abatement program is a Mass general law. We follow the Mass general laws. I was just reading up a little bit about it, because I know they expanded it to go up to $750 per person. That money does come out of the overlay account, which is money that we have to account for for property tax, just like any abatement. We're not allowed to just discount taxes. We need to go through the abatement process. So whatever increases that the council would like to do, we would just have to calculate what that exposure is and make sure we budget accordingly. But I do know that it's minimum wage, so we have to pay the minimum wage, which, whatever the state minimum wage is today, 15.75, or $15, that's the amount we can do. So if it's $750 is the maximum, I believe, abatement we can do, is it, what's it up to 1,000 now? Yeah, right, I know, you got to catch up a little bit. Whatever the law says, we just have to divide that total abatement by the number of hours to get to that $15 an hour. But with regard to how many seniors you'd like to see able to take opportunity of that, I believe that would be something you change with an ordinance, and then we'll just make sure we budget the right amount in our overlay to address that.
So can I ask?
Counselor Kelly.
So are you saying that if we go along with the statute, minimum wage, $1,000 would be the amount of the abatement that I would be looking for, that the motion is written as? If we increase the 50 individuals to 70 individuals, would we be able, so now we're going from 50,000 basically to $70,000, is that doable?
Yeah, it's certainly doable. We will just account, what we typically do is we budget an amount for overlay for regular abatements, but a lot, most of our abatements that we give through our overlay are statutory for veterans, survivors, blind, so we would just have to make sure that we up that amount 20,000, which, long story short, won't be a problem.
And do you think that those 20 spots, those 20 additional spots would be used, that they would be utilized, correct?
I mean, I don't firsthand deal with that. I know it's done through reassessors' offices and through elder services, but it can hurt to... hurt to offer it. I know taxes are going up. I know people need some relief, so maybe with the right amount of promotion, you'd get seventy seniors that would take advantage, and, you know, we'd have no problem administratively budgeting for that or handling that, but how many people actually enroll in the program? I couldn't tell you off the top of my head, or I couldn't speculate how many would do it.
I think if...
Thank you, Rich.
Any other counselors? Counselor Hess.
I think it's fair to say if the income level was adjusted, you'd see the slots get filled up pretty quickly, because I know a lot of seniors at the Senior Center had issues with the qualifying for the, the income level. So I'm pretty sure you'd see, I'm confident that you'd see more seniors.
Yeah, I mean, honestly, to add $20,000 to overlay, to have more seniors take advantage of the program, wouldn't be a problem administratively.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor McKenna. Counselor Janino. Counselor Argenzio.
Thank you. I'd like to make a substitute motion that we move from fifty to the maximum of seventy.
So we're amending the motion.
Can I... So the Application Process Section reads as follows. The number of senior citizens participating in the program shall be limited each year to a minimum of fifty and a maximum of seventy. Applications will be available and accepted at the assessor's office or the mayor's office within City Hall between July one and August one. If more than fifty persons apply for such program, a public lottery shall be conducted in the City Council chambers overseen by the treasurer, et cetera. So you're changing the fifty to seventy in both instances?
Yes.
So shall be limited each year to a minimum of seventy.
Period.
Period. And then also change the word fifty in that second sentence from fifty to seventy.
And then, Madam, I believe, Madam Clerk, that we'd also need to change that fifty thousand to seventy thousand in Section 2.88.050.
Are there any other amendments that want to be heard? Counselor Janino.
Just wanted to add a section to allow for a volunteer work off for a family member. If it's not our... It's in the statute? Is it in the statute for seniors only, or veterans only, or? Sorry. No worries, take your time.
The statute reads as follows, Counselor Hermio. For persons physically unable to provide such services to the city or town, um, oh, an approved representative for persons unable to.
That satisfies my requirement. Yeah, how do you define unable, but?
The statute just says physically unable to perform.
CFO.
Excuse me, if I may, I would just be very careful about trying to get too cute with this law. I mean, we don't want four or five different volunteers showing up. If I have to, if I can't come to work, I can't send a volunteer. If the law allows for something, I, I know there's some well-intended people in here, but let's not try to get too cute with the law. Thank you.
Mr. President.
Counselor Nowosowski.
Mr. President, you know, we all want to take care of our seniors. Everybody has a different idea. I think we ought to take the base amount. If we want to change things later, bring it up later, but let's get the base amount done now, so they get started on July first and get everything going, and let's get the base motion passed with the few number changes. That's about it.
Counsel President, I...
Instead of adding things to it, let's, let's vote on it and get it passed.
I believe I said that if we could at least get them some benefit and some increase for fiscal year 2024, we can always amend this down the road.
Yes, we're going, we're going in a circle now. Counselor Zambudo, this is the last one, last one.
Right, and, and, and I think that you, you had it right. It's all set. Let's just vote on it. You've got it, you got, you, you come up with a solution, now let's vote on it.
So we're going to the max amount of people. We're going to be voting on an amendment to go from fifty to seventy. We're also going to be going from fifty thousand to seventy thousand.
Right.
Okay, so let's take the amendments up first and get this thing passed.
The amendments are as follows. Section one is amended as follows. Section 288-020 is amended by deleting twelve and inserting in place thereof fifteen. Section two is amended as follows. Section 2.88.020 is amended by deleting sixty-two and inserting in place thereof sixty-six point six. New section four, section 2.88.050, financing of the program is hereby amended by deleting twenty-five thousand and inserting in place thereof seventy thousand. And section, this is going to be new section five, section 288-030, the Application Process, the number of senior, I'm sorry, shall be limited each year to a minimum of seventy participants, and you're also striking the word fifty and inserting in place thereof seventy persons. Roll call for those amendments? Yeah, you can, if you want.
Roll call on the amendments.
On the amendments, Counselor Argenzio?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Janino?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Garino-Suaya?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Hess?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Hermio?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Kelly?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor McKenna?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Nowosowski?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Silvestri?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes, and Council President Cogliandro?
Yes.
Yes, the amendments have been approved?
Ordered on a second reading as amended. Ordered on a third and final reading as amended. Roll call for engrossment and ordainment as amended.
Shall the City Council approve an ordinance further amending the senior citizen property tax work off abatement program as amended? Counselor Argenzio?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Janino?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Garino-Suaya?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Hess?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Hermio?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Kelly?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor McKenna?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Nowosowski?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Silvestri?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes, and Council President Cogliandro?
Yes.
Yes, the ordinance is recorded as engrossed and ordained as amended. Next matter is the Health and Human Services Subcommittee Report, calendar item number six. Motion presented by Counselor Kelly that the City Council order to a public hearing an ordinance requiring the publication of certain records of the police department.
Counselor Hess.
Thank you, Mr. President. So the Health and Human Services Subcommittee voted to table the request by a favorable vote of three to two.
Mr. President.
Counselor Argenzio.
I'd like to place a minority report to take it off the table.
Absolutely.
So my reasoning being, I think this is an excellent motion by Counselor Kelly. We talked about this at length. I think a publication on a website that indicates what's going on in your neighborhood as far as car break-ins, house break-ins, make the residents a little bit more aware. Counselor Hermio did bring up a great point about substance abuse. So if necessary, I'd make a motion, or a substitute motion, that anything concerning substance abuse, the address and location not be published, and that just a general statistic citywide be available. If that's agreeable.
Counselor Kelly.
Yes, I would be agreeable with that.
Counselor Silvestri.
Thank you, Mr. President. If we could just get it in the amendment to have it put on the police page instead of the riviere.org page, I think that's the more appropriate place for it to be put.
So we have two amendments so far. Anyone else want to offer amendments?
Mr. President.
Counselor Hess.
Thank you, Mr. President. And just to make sure that, I know when it was read in the subcommittee, we, we mentioned names, just to make sure there's no names in there. If we want to have a, a list of areas, you know, where, or days of the week, Monday this happened, Tuesday this happened, just to alert residents, but we have to make sure if we put this through, we're not going to put anyone's names.
Okay, so at this time, we're going to take a roll call vote to remove this from the table. Madam Clerk.
On Counselor Argenzio's minority report, to take the ordinance out of committee and onto the floor, Counselor Argenzio?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Janino?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Garino-Suaya?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Hess?
No.
No, Counselor Hermio?
No.
No, Counselor Kelly?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor McKenna?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Nowosowski?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Silvestri?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes, and Council President Cogliandro?
Yes.
Yes, the Health and Human Services, I'm sorry, the ordinance is now on the floor.
We currently have amendments, unless there's any other counselors wishing to speak on the issue. Would it be possible to reiterate those amendments once more? I know that one of them was Counselor Argenzio's to remove...
Yes, to anything having to do with substance abuse, that addresses are not published, and that just a general statistic citywide be available.
Let us take a roll call on that first. Counselor Janino.
On Counselor Argenzio's motion to, I guess, include, to amend Section 260, 2.60.120, Section A, shall not, I'm sorry, the police blotter, I just want to get the...
Mr. President, and just in the spirit of expediency, if it pleases Counselor Argenzio, may we add the word mental health as well, mental health issues?
That's agreeable to me.
That way we don't have to take multiple votes.
This public, so it's 2.60.120A, shall be amended to read the last sentence, a new sentence shall be added, that statistics regarding substance abuse and mental health incidents shall not be included.
I'm sorry.
Counselor Kelly.
I'm sorry, I believe they want to just citywide statistical data to be...
No publication of addresses or anything.
Madam Clerk, may I recommend, would you like me to recommend some language? So after... I don't know if it's proper language, but after the word police blotter, with the exception of mental health and substance use, not substance abuse, but substance use incidents. Sure. So shall make the police blotter and arrest log accessible, with the exception, sorry, with the exception to the substance use. So, so in the first sentence, the police department, this is how it would read, the police department shall make the police blotter and arrest log accessible with the exception of substance use and mental health incidents to the public by publishing it on a weekly basis on the official website of the city of Riviere. Oh, I see what you're saying.
Why not say to remove the geographical location of calls or arrests involving substance abuse and mental health? Because that's, that's what it sounds like, removing any geographical information in regards to those, to those two arrests.
I think we're doing both, right? Mr. President, we're removing the geographical location and making explicit that we're going to ask that they keep mental health and substance use incidents off the blotter.
I, I don't think we want to keep them off the blotter. We would like to have a number.
I thought that's what I understood the...
No, we, we want to have a number, but it would be, instead of, we want a number of what's going on, and we have a right to know what's going on as well, and no names, no geographical location for substance use arrests and mental health arrests. I think that that's completely fine. That way they, they don't have to go out of their way to make another list. Counselor Nowosowski.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a point of information, it asks for all this to be published weekly. Is that necessary to have it so often, and maybe once a month? You know, just an inquiry.
Counselor Janino.
If I'm not mistaken, the mental health issues are all hipper anyway, so that's all redacted on the reports. I think we could just have them make a entry like Counselor Nowosowski said, once a month, with the crime statistics in general for the city, to give us different areas, what's going on, where it's going on at, rather than a breakdown of individual crimes and locations with names listed on it.
No, I'm, I'm sorry, that's not what I'm, that's not what this motion is. I mean, if, if someone wants to do that in the future, but this motion is specifically so that people will know what types of crimes are being committed in their neighborhoods and communities, so that they will have some awareness, which directly relates to their public safety.
Counsel Silvestri? Oh, sorry, Counselor Janino.
That's already public information, though. Anyone go to the station for public records and that stuff?
I'm sorry?
That's public information already. You could walk in the front door and get the information for the, the logs from the night before or the week before.
Okay, so the reason why, in my presentation in subcommittee, the reason why I brought this motion was because people were not seeing a police blotter publicized anymore. They felt uncomfortable trying to call police, the police department to try to get the information, and they often couldn't get the information. So they want a way where they can stay anonymous and not have to reveal their information in order to get this information, which should be made publicly available to them without having to jump through hoops or, or anything. So in that vein, this is why I brought the motion.
Counselor Silvestri.
Thank you, Mr. President. So I'm, I'm here on the City of Riviere Police Department page. It's called the media log. It's put on by, I think, Officer Mangino, and I think that would be the perfect place to have this. And also, in this log, they are, majority of the, the information is redacted. So I, I would be in favor of this information going on, on the City of Riviere Police Department's media log. It shows case numbers and, and stuff like that, and everything's redacted on that. So I think that should be the way the place would go, like the only thing I would ask for. Thank you.
Okay, so just to pause for a second. A lot of people want to talk. We were in the middle of making an amendment. So let's figure out this amendment before we have any further discussion, if that's okay. It's okay? Nope, I've given, given everybody leeway. And I do want to state that a lot of the questions asked tonight were, have been discussed already. I mean, I'm looking at the City of Lynn Police Department does the same thing. They list all their call logs, you know? So let's finish the amendment.
So the amendment was as follows, Section 2.60.120, Section A, a new sentence at the end of that section shall read as follows, "Geographical information shall not be included for incidents relative to substance use and mental health."
Roll call.
Roll call on that amendment, Counselor Argenzio.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Janino.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Garino Sawaya.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Haas.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Hare mio.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Kelly.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor McKenna.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Novoselsky.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Silvestri.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Zambudo.
Yes.
Yes, and Counsel President Cogliandro.
Yes.
Yes, that amendment has passed.
Are there any other amendments being offered at this time?
Yes.
Counselor Sylvesteri, my apologies, continue.
Yes, Mr. President, that if we just have it put on the Riviera Police Department's media log page.
Counselor Kelly.
The only exception to that, that I would like a link on the riviera.org, and then, you know, it could link over, the information could actually be on the police department, but I would like some type of indication, our link on the riviera.org website.
Yeah, yeah.
Right.
A link to that thing.
Just going to get the language quickly.
So the amendment offered by Counselor Sylvesteri, so it would be striking, and this is in Section A of Section 260.120, on the, so it shall, so I'm sorry, the first sentence shall read, "The police department shall make the police blotter and arrest log accessible to the public by publishing it on a weekly basis on the official media page of the Riviera Police Department, period. Further, that the link to that page be included on the official website of the City of Riviera."
Roll call.
Roll call on that amendment, Counselor Argenzio.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Janino.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Garino Sawaya.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Haas.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Hare mio.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Kelly.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor McKenna.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Novoselsky.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Silvestri.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Zambudo.
Yes.
Yes, and Counsel President Cogliandro.
Yes.
Yes, that amendment has been approved.
Are there any other amendments to be offered this evening on this? Counselor Garino Sawaya.
I don't have an amendment. I would just like to thank Counselor Kelly for bringing this to the table.
My pleasure.
Ordered on a second reading as amended. Ordered, oh, my, oh, I'm sorry. This will be June, public hearing on June 24th.
Next up is the zoning subcommittee report.
Counselor Zambudo.
Thank you, Mr. President. Obviously, the zoning subcommittee met this evening. We had two items on the table. First one is 24156, an ordinance further amending the zoning map of the City of Riviera relative to TED district, be it ordained. The City of Riviera, as follows, Section 1, Title 17 of the revised ordinances of the City of Riviera, and the zoning map provided by Section 17.12.020 of the said title is hereby amended by changing the zoning district of the following parcels from GB to TED, parcel 10-188A3-1,
You stole my motion.
And 10-188A-4. And that was voted out favorably, and I'd ask for a roll call. It's a mouthful.
Ordered on a second reading.
Apologize for that.
It's okay. Ordered on a third and final reading. Roll call for engrossment and ordainment.
Shall the City Council approve an amendment to the zoning map of the City of Riviera by changing certain parcels located on North Shore Road from GB to TED? Counselor Argenzio.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Janino.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Garino Sawaya.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Haas.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Hare mio.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Kelly.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor McKenna.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Novoselsky.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Silvestri.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Zambudo.
Yes.
Yes, and Counsel President Cogliandro.
Yes.
Yes, the zoning map amendment has been approved.
The next item up was 24-168, a zoning ordinance further the floodplain overlay district of the City of Riviera. That was also voted out favorably.
Ordered on a second reading. Ordered on a third and final reading. Roll call for engrossment and ordainment.
Shall the City Council approve an amendment to the zoning ordinances of the City of Riviera relative to the floodplain district? Counselor Argenzio.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Janino.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Garino Sawaya.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Haas.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Hare mio.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Kelly.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor McKenna.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Novoselsky.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Silvestri.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Zambudo.
Yes.
Yes, and Counsel President Cogliandro.
Yes.
Yes, the floodplain district is engrossed and ordained. Next up is the appointment subcommittee report.
Counselor McKenna.
Thank you, Mr. President. The appointments subcommittee met this evening. We had three reappointments and two new appointments. We tabled one appointment because of a no-show. I would like to vote the appointments out favorably that showed up tonight for the meeting.
Would you like to take up the four at once?
Yes, thank you.
On the confirmation, the appointment of Deborah Frank to the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, Toby Pearlstein to the Library Board of Trustees, Marita Coombs to the Library Board of Trustees, and Paul Ring to the Library Board of Trustees. Counselor Argenzio.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Janino.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Garino Sawaya.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Haas.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Hare mio.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Kelly.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor McKenna.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Novoselsky.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Silvestri.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Zambudo.
Yes.
Yes, and Counsel President Cogliandro.
Yes.
Yes, the appointments have been confirmed. Communications, calendar item number 14, communication from the city auditor relative to the Riviera cable TV appropriation.
Good evening, sir, again.
Hey, good evening. Richard Viskay, 281 Broadway, City CFO. This request is a quarterly request of the council to appropriate the money that we collect on behalf of the cable company contracts, and needs to be appropriated for operation of Riviera TV. So happy to answer any questions if there are any.
Any counselors?
Move the question, roll call.
All in favor? Oh, we got a roll call on the floor. Roll call, please.
Shall the City Council approve an appropriation in the amount of $103,918.83 from the Cable Access Receipt Reserve Fund for the payment of Riviera TV's quarterly invoice? Counselor Argenzio.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Janino.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Garino Sawaya.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Haas.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Hare mio.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Kelly.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor McKenna.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Novoselsky.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Silvestri.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Zambudo.
Yes.
Yes, and Counsel President Cogliandro.
Yes.
Yes, the appropriation has been approved. Calendar item number 15, communication from the city auditor for the FY '24 free cash appropriation for the sand sculpting festival.
Good evening, Richard Viskay, 281 Broadway, City CFO. We are here to request free cash appropriation to help with the annual sand sculpting festival at the beach, and the amount that is being requested is $150,000. It's a little less than we requested last year, but we did have $2 million less in free cash, so trying to spread it out accordingly. So again, $150,000 requested to help support the sand sculpting festival at the beach. Happy to answer any questions.
Any counselors? Counselor Argenzio.
Thank you, Mr. Viskay. Which department handles those requests and purchase orders and whatever?
The free, yeah, excuse me. The request was through the mayor's office.
Through the mayor's office, okay.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Counselor Zambudo.
So I'm going to vote no on this, so I've got to give an explanation. The sand sculpting festival was going on for years. A corporate sponsor donated $10,000 a year, every year. One year, they were in trouble, they needed extra money, and they gave them another $10,000. Then somebody decided that they weren't environmentally friendly and decided not to take their money anymore. So I don't support the organization anymore because of that, and I can't vote with good conscience to spend taxpayers' money on this. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. If there's no other counselors, let's take a roll call.
Shall the City Council approve an appropriation in the amount of $150,000 from free cash to the sand sculpting festival account? Counselor Argenzio.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Janino.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Garino Sawaya.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Haas.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Hare mio.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Kelly.
No.
No, Counselor McKenna.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Novoselsky.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Silvestri.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Zambudo.
No.
No, and Counsel President Cogliandro.
Yes.
Yes, the appropriation has been approved. Calendar item number 16, communication from the city auditor relative to the FY '24 snow and ice deficit.
Thank you, Richard Viskay, 281 Broadway, City CFO. This free cash appropriation will bring our snow and ice deficit to zero. As you may know, we are allowed to spend in deficit on our snow and ice account due to the nature of that account and the emergency nature of it, but in order to close the books with a zero deficit in that account, we are seeking an appropriation of $171,000 to ensure that there is no snow and ice deficit to raise in fiscal year 2025's recap. Thank you.
Any counselors? Roll call.
Shall the City Council approve an appropriation in the amount of $171,000 from free cash to the snow and ice deficit account? Counselor Argenzio.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Janino.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Garino Sawaya.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Haas.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Hare mio.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Kelly.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor McKenna.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Novoselsky.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Silvestri.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Zambudo.
Yes.
Yes, and Counsel President Cogliandro.
Yes.
Yes, the appropriation has been approved.
Mr. President.
Counselor Novoselsky.
Can I ask for a suspension of rules on reconsideration, item 15, hoping it will not prevail?
On the suspension of rules, all in favor, all opposed. So ordered, rules are suspended. And on the reconsideration for item number 15, communication from the auditor in regards to free cash appropriation for the sand sculpting festival, all in favor, all opposed. Counselor Zambudo has recorded as no.
Thank you, sir.
Calendar item number 17, communication from the city auditor relative to the FY '25 budget appropriation.
Thank you, Richard Viskay, 281 Broadway, City CFO. I have placed in front of all the counselors the budget book for fiscal year 2025. The appropriation order is part of that budget, it's what you would vote on, and we will begin those hearings on June 10th, which will be in attendance for June 10th. In every other meeting of the Ways and Means Summit Committee, we can give a brief presentation on the budget on the 10th, but this order is before you to hopefully put in committee and start those budget hearings, but happy to answer any questions on the appropriation order itself.
This is going to Ways and Means. The budget meetings will take place June 10th, 11th, 12th, and 13th. And I forgot to state, we are back to the normal order of business.
Calendar item number 18, communication from the mayor requesting approval of proclamations in recognition of Pride Month on Juneteenth.
Good evening, sir. Name and address for the record, please.
Steve Morabito, Director of Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion for the City of Riviera, 281 Broadway. Good evening, honorable members of this city council. I am presenting two significant proclamations on behalf of the mayor. The first proclamation is to declare the month of June as LGBTQ plus Pride Month, celebrating the invaluable contributions of the LGBTQ individuals in our community. Also, committing to an annual flag raising ceremony and pride celebration to demonstrate our support and unity. The second proclamation is in recognition of Juneteenth's historical significance. We pledged to honor this day with a yearly flag raising commemorating the emancipation of enslaved African Americans and reaffirming our commitment to equity and justice for all. Through you, Madam Clerk, to the council president, there is, on the Juneteenth proclamation, the first paragraph, I was wondering if you could, there was an error, if you could strike the last sentence of the first paragraph, strike the words "on June 19th." So we'll just read "to conduct a yearly flag raising ceremony," and then insert "in recognition of Juneteenth," because originally it said June 19th, but City Hall is closed.
On the amendment, all in favor, all opposed. So ordered.
Thank you.
On the proclamation recognizing the month of June as Pride Month, all in favor, all opposed. So ordered. And on the proclamation recognizing June 19th as Juneteenth, all in favor, all opposed. So ordered.
Calendar item number 19, communication from the mayor requesting a loan order in the amount of $3 million for Phase 15 construction project, number 16729, for pump station and drainage improvements.
Good evening, Richard Viskay, City CFO, 281 Broadway. This request is part of us staying a good standard with our consent decree. In past years, we've asked for a much larger loan order. However, we are coming close to the end of, hopefully, the, at least the surge, and I and I part of that consent decree. And while we weren't even thinking of coming to the council for a loan order for this fiscal year, we found that with the principal forgiveness that is being funneled through the state's trust to the cities and towns, it was better for us to seek a loan order for 3 million and rescind the old money of 3-plus million to take advantage of that program. So I know this is going to a public hearing, but just wanted to give a little information on why we are proposing debt on that. We are by no means complete with the consent decree, but I think we're at a critical point where we're going to be at the Phase 2 of that project. But it's- But it's proven for us to take advantage of debt forgiveness through the OPa funds given to the trust, so we've lowered that appropriation to three million, and we'll be coming forward in the next couple of weeks with some bond rescissions on that program. So, I know it's going to committee, but happy to try to answer any questions on that if needed.
Thank you, Mr. Viskey. Counselor Silvestri?
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Viskey, do you have a rough estimate on when we'll be done with that decree?
That is a tricky question. I think we got an extension until twenty—twenty thirty-four. So, I do know that with just about lined one hundred percent of our sewer pipes in the city, we've done a lot of lead service replacements. We've done a lot of the initial stuff with regard to the repairs, but I think some of this now is just trying to figure out the volume of the sewers that has to be pumped through MWRA, and that might mean a third station and such. But the initial work between all the lining of the sewer pipes is essentially completed with the money that's already been bonded or will be bonded. So, I think there's some negotiations that have to be done with the state and the MWRA about how we're going to get the flow to the treatment plant and whether that's a third station or not. But, yeah, the majority of the actual work on the ground, I believe, is pretty much completed.
Thank you.
This will be ordered to a public hearing on June twenty-fourth.
Calendar item number twenty, motion presented by Counselor Garino Sawaya that the mayor request the DEI director or the Riviera Community School to investigate grant opportunities for the purpose of fully funding Spanish classes for city employees, period, and residents was a typo.
Counselor Garino Sawaya?
Firstly, can we please add Counselor Aramillo to this motion as well? Okay, so what I'm looking for is a course that will provide adult students with basic conversational Spanish skills when communicating with families. As a city counselor, I've run into a situation where so many people speak Spanish, and I can't—I—I can't answer them. I do have the opportunity to understand them because I do speak Italian, but as far as my communicating with them, I cannot do it. So, what I'm looking for is—I want the ability to be able to have a conversation with them and know what they need from me as a counselor. I'm looking for a Spanish instructor with—ready to teach the basic speaking skills, and I think with—in the city's fiscal budget of twenty twenty-four, there's a thirty thousand dollar line for community schools. Would this be able to pay for us as counselors or anyone in the city who would like to take the Spanish course? I'm not sure. I know it's an educational program that—for the salary of the instructor, so they do have that in community schools. So, I'm wondering if we can further find a way to fund this, maybe going to a different department in the city, maybe community development, to fund this for us. Thank you.
Counselor Novoselfsky?
Mr. President, through you, Counselor Guevara, the thirty thousand that you saw, was that in the school department or the city budget? Can't hear you. Can't hear you. Can't hear you.
It's in community schools.
So, it's in the school department budget, then? No, it's not?
Community school is in the city budget.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. President, this is—
Counselor Janino?
Thank you. Fully supportive of my colleague in this endeavor, and I really appreciate her putting in this motion and adding me on it. Of course, language equity clearly becoming a priority of this council, and very appreciative for all my colleagues, and particularly Counselor Garino Sawat.
Permission to speak from the chair? I just—I think this is a great motion, and I just want to point out that this motion is to investigate grant opportunities, so I don't—you know, I'm fine with this because it's not us voting to spend money right away. Thank you. All in favor, all opposed? So ordered.
Calendar item number twenty-one, motion presented by councilors Argenzio and Kelly that the mayor request the engineering department and the DPW to reconfigure the northwest corner of the island at the intersection of Park Ave and Dale Street. The curb at the island comes to a point, and vehicles making a left turn from Park Ave to Dale Street are damaging their tires and rims. The point should be removed and replaced with a piece of radial curb to round off the corner.
Counselor Argenzio?
Yes, thanks, Mr. President. This is—it speaks for itself. There's a point there, and people are coming around, and they're blowing their tires and ruining their rims. A simple reconfiguration with a piece of radius curb will go a long way in helping out the situation. Thank you.
Thank you, counselor. Counselor Novoselfsky?
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, I know exactly what you're talking about. I've run into that situation many times, especially during the winter when there's snow on it, and I've always complained to various departments in the city to complain about it, and they even put the sign—there's a sign on there to keep right or watch for pedestrians. It's over on the left-hand side of the—of that island, and people don't realize it extends. Even if we put that radial—the radius curb to put some kind of ballad there also so it sticks up higher, at the same time while they're redoing it to put a ballad there so they could see where the end of it is.
Thank you, counselor. Counselor Zambudo?
Thank you, Mr. President. I support this motion wholeheartedly. It's one of the most dangerous places in the city. Anything that can be done about it that makes it safer—I mean, somebody's got to put an engineer—with an engineering degree, he's got to put something together there that will work, because whoever come up with that abomination is really—it's really a bad situation. So, I support the motion wholeheartedly. Thank you.
Thank you, counselor. All in favor, all opposed? So ordered.
Calendar item number twenty-two, motion presented by Counselor McKenna that the mayor request the DPW to install a new concrete sidewalk on the lower portion of Pearl Ave on the left-hand side of the street heading in an easterly direction. The entire length of Pearl Ave has already been repaved, and a new concrete sidewalk on the right-hand side of the lower portion of Pearl Ave has already been installed.
Counselor McKenna?
Thank you, Mr. President. So, three-fourths of the street is done, and I would really like the other side of the sidewalk—the other side of the street to have new sidewalks because of the extensive flooding down there. That left-hand side sidewalk is in disarray. It's also—one side is concrete, the other side is asphalt, and the asphalt is just disappearing. So, I would really—I know there's nothing in the budget, and I know that I—we're not scheduled. Pearl Ave is not scheduled, but I really do believe they should complete the street. It's not right that they—you know, three-fourths of the street is done, and then the other side where where people live is not done, and—and the—the asphalt is dissipating. So, I would really like to see this done. Thank you.
Thank you, counselor. On the motion, all in favor, all opposed? So ordered.
Calendar item number twenty-three, motion presented by Council President Cogliandro that the mayor and superintendent of public schools appear before the city council to discuss the status of air conditioning in the Lincoln School. Further, that the city purchase and install air conditioning for the Lincoln School as soon as possible.
Permission to speak from the chair? So, put this motion in based on a whole bunch of phone calls from parents, including my own children, reporting to me that it is incredibly hot in that school. Now, I am also aware that the air conditioning was installed in twenty twenty-one, but because of the way that the—the system is programmed, it does not kick on until it gets to a certain degree. So, what ends up happening is they open the windows, it gets very muggy in the classrooms once the air conditioning kicks on, and that's the big reason that this is happening. I—I spoke to the facilities manager in regards to it. I was planning to withdraw the motion this evening, but Counselor Zambudo?
I'm—I'm flabbergasted that we're still having trouble at the Lincoln School with air conditioning. It's unbelievable. Somebody's got to bring in the manufacturer to override this situation that doesn't let the air conditioning come on. I mean, we're in twenty twenty-four here, and give me a break. I—I mean, we went through hell trying to get air conditioning there, and now they still don't have it. You can't make this stuff up, as they say.
I think that, you know, hopefully, the facilities manager might—might add some tweaks to the—to the system so that it's—it kicks on it with a certain temperature, and maybe they lower the—or—or lower the temperature it needs to be before the air conditioning kicks on. But, you know, I know that they installed it. I have two of my own children that go to that school.
Yeah.
They're not going to come home and lie to me if they're hot.
Course not, and that's why it's got to be fixed.
Any other councilors? I'm going to withdraw this because that's what I said I was going to do.
Calendar item number twenty-four, motion presented by Council President Cogliandro that the mayor and city council send a joint letter to Mastod requesting that a traffic study be completed for Brown Circle in the interest of vehicular safety. Counselor Zambudo is recused from this motion.
Permission to speak from the chair? I think this kind of speaks for itself. Any—anyone born and raised here has mastered the art of that circle at this point, but for the people who have not, it is a dangerous place to drive, and, like I said, this speaks for itself. I would like a traffic study done to see if there's any other safety measures we can take at that circle. Any other councilors? All in favor, all opposed? So ordered.
Calendar item number twenty-five, motion presented by Counselor Haas that the mayor be requested to investigate the feasibility of revitalizing and expanding the donation fund for emergency purposes in an effort to immediately assist families who have been displaced due to an emergency like a fire or harsh weather.
Counselor Haas?
Thank you, Mr. President. So, this came about a few ways. I've noticed recently, the last year or so, that if there's a fire or an emergency, the city will put out an inquiry or look to residents to donate items. Recently, I had just seen a post from the Board of Health that asked for men's shirts, sizes, mediums, and larges, and I definitely would have brought my stuff, but I had just brought it to Savers in Route One. So, I was saying to myself, I'd love to see the city set up a space, set up a program where residents can donate two to three items max. That way, residents are not dropping off trash bags full of stuff, you know? But if they—if a resident—if they choose can drop off two to three items in great shape, that the city can establish an emergency fund for those families that are displaced by fires, displaced by flood—flooding, if a car crashes into a first-floor apartment and they have to wait months and months, and they can't get any of their stuff or—or any of their supplies. But I also—in talking to a few people, I also found out that the fire fund is more or less depleted at this point, so I was hoping to see if the city can kind of kickstart or resurrect an emergency-type fund for families that have to go to hotels or even purchase supplies. And I would also love to see—the see the city build a network of hotels and even restaurants and supermarkets that they can kind of team up with in—in case of an emergency and a family is looking for anything from—for shelter or supplies or clothing. But it's—it's actually two—it's—there's the money part of it, the—the donation fund that I'd like to see built up somehow, whether it's through fundraising or co-drives, and it's also the—the—the clothing and things like that that will really, really help—help families, and it will also help the—the city and Adrian McGuire, who's the emergency preparedness manager, and—from running around, trying to locate items at all hours of the night, and Adrian does an outstanding job being there for our residents. She's always gone above and beyond. She does great work, and I'd love to see us kind of go to bat for her. That way, she's not chasing down items in the middle of the night or—or trying to call a hotel to book a space for a family that just had to escape a fire at their house in wintertime. Thank you.
Thank you, counselor. Counselor McKenna?
Thank you, Mr. President. So, Counselor Haas, we've had two major fires in Beachmont. One in—not—not Beachmont, Ward One. One in Beachmont, six houses. The other, two houses in—right down the street. It was so hard because Red Cross only gives a certain amount of money per a family to put them up in a hotel. After that, these people have to find their own money to—to live. They can't move back in their house. Counselor Kelly had a great idea to—to—because I don't want to take the respons—yeah, the credit myself, but she had a great idea. She's writing it down, and I'm reading it. I mean, a couple of years ago, we were bartenders at Drift, and we raised a ton of money. We could do the same to—a fundraiser, and we've got a top contributor, Amazon, here that should give us money, maybe a wish list for some of these people that are—you know, that—in need. I know that the First Congregational Church has been super to us, Riviera. They open their doors, and we—we get a lot of—we ask for donations, and we get a lot of donations. Sometimes, we get too many donations that just people want to get rid of stuff, and they don't know what to do with it. But, I mean, two great ideas for Amazon that someone just texted me about that, and I think that's wonderful, and Counselor Kelly's idea about having a fundraiser, we could do it as bartenders, because people just love to see us sweat. So, I mean—and they would come out in July or August, and—and they would probably give us—you know, if we asked for a certain amount of donation, say ten dollars or something, then we could start a fund. So, I—I think this is a great motion. I am with you one hundred percent, and I've experienced it, and I've worked with Adrian to try to get close, so—in items, so I understand the need for this. So, thank you very much.
If residents want to see us sweat, they can come to the next cornhole tournament. Counselor Silvestri?
Thank you, Mr. President. I—I think this is a great motion. I—I just see—I—I think there needs to be a—a tweak to it. There's—it's got to be a—a timeframe, I think, you know? If someone gets put in a hotel, it's great that we help, but for how long, right? And, you know, as Counselor Haas said, I think we need to be strict on-on items, you know? In the veterans' office, people would always call, I would like to donate a few shirts, and next thing you know, they come with trash bags full, and it's—it's old, worn stuff, and it's—so, I—I think we really got to work this out and—and put it together in—in a right way so we don't end up with a—a—a room full of people's spring cleanings.
Thank you, counselor. Counselor Kelly?
I just want to say, in—in regards to seeing us sweat, my idea was karaoke with your councilors. It's for a fundraiser.
Objection. Sir, name and address for the record, please.
Anthony Pozziale, fifty-one Arcadia Street. Just a suggestion, you may want to do it outside of the city. The group that runs the Riviera Beach Partnership, FMP, they are fantastic at these programs. They run a foundation called the Greg Hill Foundation, which its purpose is to help out families that have been caught in fires or—or storm damage or any type of tragedy. FMP is a fantastic—I—I mean, they're—this is what they do, and we already have a partnership with them, with the Riviera Beach Partnership. Maybe they could start another fund called the Riviera Fund, and they could run it—the backend stuff for you guys, and then all you have to do is show up and be a bartender. And—I mean, I—I don't know if FMP would be—would hop on it, but we already—I mean, we just gave them one hundred and fifty thousand dollars. I think they would help us out, and maybe we would take the money from Zambudo's buddies to start the fund. Thanks.
On the motion, all in favor, all opposed? So ordered. There is no further business. The next city council meeting will be June twenty-fourth. Everyone have a good evening.
Go Celtics!
You know it. You know it.